While the meeting is ordered, I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Republicans, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Approval of the agenda, we have one addition, under 7J, approve EMT pay rate with back pay. Is there any other changes? Counsel? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that addition?
So motion.
Motion by Heidi, second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the December 2nd, 2015 regular meeting. You all received them in your packet. Is there any changes, corrections, clarification? If not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 2nd, 2015 meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Okay.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Now's our public open forum, where the public has a chance to address any questions to the council. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Seeing no one, our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings. We then move on to reports and presentations. Police Department, Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Activity report for November 2015, some of the numbers we had. We had six alarm calls, we had two K-9 assists, 28 assists for other agencies, three burglaries, three fifth-degree controlled substance arrests, four disorderly conducts, 10 driving on a revocated or suspended license citations, five small amount of marijuana or drug paraphernalia arrests, one fleeing, 10 gas no-pay, six juvenile problems, 13 matter-of-information calls, 19 medicals, 11 accidents, 10 school patrol, 12 suspicious calls, three thefts, three unwanted calls. We had 17 welfare checks, and we did 148 verbal warnings were given out. Compare that to October, we're down in calls by 69, down in warnings by 92, down total activity by 161. And compare that to 2014, up by calls 69, down warnings 94, down on total activity of 25. So, that's about all I have for that.
Any questions?
The burglaries, are they, um, is, are they still open, or?
Open investigations?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, yep.
Were they related to each other?
Uh, no.
So all separate incidents?
Right.
Separate suspect?
Yep. Yeah. Some of them are, uh, acquaintance going in, yeah, so, we're working on them, yeah.
I, um, I just wanted to say, I read in the paper where you busted somebody for weapons violations and drugs up by the, by the school.
Yep.
Good job.
Juvenile. Yep, Officer Jensen did a fine job on that traffic stop and, uh...
You gonna promote Sonny to sergeant, no?
Yeah, we should. Yep.
Any other questions? Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance Committee report?
Okay, the Finance Committee, which is Warren Stone and Dave Thomas, they met on Thursday, December 10th, to review various items, all three of which are agenda items tonight. The electric franchise fee, they discussed that, that's your Agenda Item 7I. And also, they discussed, then they have recommendations for the purchase offer for the transit garage, and the purchase offer for the information center property, both of which Agenda Item Number 12, which will be going to closed session at the end of this meeting to discuss. So that was their three main items of, uh, Agenda items at that meeting.
Okay. Questions? Okay, thank you. Move on to our action items, accept resignation on EDA Board?
Dennis Heinon is the Chamber, Sock Center Chamber of Commerce representative on our EDA Board. He will no longer be a member of the Sock Center Chamber of Commerce Board, so it would be, that also vacates his position on the EDA Board. He did submit a letter resignation stating that, he is thanked, thanked us for the chance to serve Sock Center all these years. His resignation is effective at the end of 2015. And in your board and commission appointments, you do have a recommendation for an appointment to fill that position. And so we're asking to accept the resignation of Dennis Heinon from the EDA Board.
Do I have a motion to accept resignation of Dennis Heinon from the EDA Board?
I'll make the recommendation.
We have a motion from Diane?
I will second that.
Second by Keith, any other discussion?
Just like to thank him for his, your service.
Very much so. Comments? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7B, approved 2016 board and commission appointments?
Every year at the second meeting in December, the City Council appoints members to fill the upcoming boards and commissions. You have them all laid out in front of you, each of the boards. And the mayor has looked at all the applications and spoken with the candidates, and I think he'll just go through them one at a time. And he has recommendations for the Park Board, Planning Commission, Public Utilities Commission, Senior Center Board, CVB Airport Commission, HRA, and the Central Care Board. So, Warren, if you want to go from there?
Okay, um, I did talk to the people, we had multiple people that were applying for one position or two positions. On the ones where we have one, I did not feel it was necessary. Based though, on how these appointments are mounted, there's only actually two positions, or the Convention Visitors Bureau on the EDA that are appointed by the mayor. The rest are all appointed by the council. So based on that, and on how it's written, I'm gonna leave it up to the council. If you want me to give you my recommendation and you approve it that way, but I want your approval before I go ahead and do that. Otherwise, I'm gonna leave it on each position open for the council to make their recommendation. So, I guess what I'm looking for is what the council's wishes would be if you want me to... Years past, the mayor has always made the recommendation with the council approval, but that's not how these boards, some of them have been written. So I want to do it the proper way. So...
I, I have no problem if you want to appoint Mayor Stone, that'd be fine with me.
Okay. Then I make the recommendation, and then the council approves it.
Recommendations are fine, yep.
Okay, fine. I know I am, I'm only one vote, so that's why it's still, but the way it's written up on the appointments is the clarification.
There's only two, so I mean, we can have a little discussion anyway.
Right, right, yes. So, um, Park Board, there, no one has applied for that position, so we do have one position to be appointed for a two-year term. Um, that one will remain open until someone puts their name in, I take it. Um, Planning Commission, we have one position to be appointed for a three-year term, and one position for a one-year term. My recommendation is that we put Roy Walls in for the three-year term, and Larry Jansen in for the one-year term. I don't know, you want to take action?
I, I don't have a problem with that, I think Marty has been kind of reluctant, reluctantly going year by year because we could never get a replacement. We finally got a replacement, so...
Yeah, okay, I don't think there'll be any, right?
Yep. Sounds good.
Do we want to act on all the appointments at the end?
I think we can. Just to clarify, this is a one-year appointment, but it would become a three-year appointment, right?
There's one year left of that three-year, because Marty, he said, "I'll take it for a year, I'll take it for another year." There's one year left of that three-year, so once this one year is up, it reverts back to being a three-year.
Okay.
Good. Okay, moving on, Public Utilities Commission, we have one position to be appointed for a three-year term. Roy Walls, Mark Roeburg, and Larry Jansen, all three have showed interest. My recommendation is to put Mark Roeburg in that position. Um, I have nothing against either one of the other applicants. I just feel that we need to start changing things and get more different opinions on some of our commissions. Anyone have any comments or concerns with that choice? I'm open to them. Can always be changed.
All right, Matt?
Matt?
That sounds good.
All right. EDA Board, we have one position to be appointed for a six-year term, and one position for a four-year term. The four-year term is basically the position that Dennis Heinon just resigned from. Kevin Uphoff would be for the six-year, and Lynette Ossendorf would be the Chamber of Commerce Board representative for the four-year term. Those two positions would be full. Senior Center Board, we, members can be appointed for a three-year term. The board can consist of anywhere from five to 15 members. We have two people interested, Alice Rothfork and Elaine Meyer. I recommend both of them be put on the board. Convention and Visitors Bureau, three positions to be appointed for a three-year term. Kelly Fries, Joanne Thorson, Pamela Borgman, all three have put their names back in to take those positions, and I recommend that all three of them be put in their spot. Airport Commission, one position to be appointed for a three-year term. That would be Matt Zinnio. He would be recommended. That preserves him. HRA Board, one position to be appointed for an unexpired 15-month term. That would be Mickey Marine Welly. She is the one that applied for it, and I see no reason for her not to be there. Central Care Sock Center Board, one position to be recommended for a three-year term. Dr. Jody Lavoy has submitted her application, and we actually even got a letter of recommendation on that one too, from Central Care wanting to, and since she's the only person, I recommend that she be appointed. Any other comments?
I just have one question. That EDA Board, six-year term?
That's by state statute, that it's a six-year term.
Really?
Yeah.
Good lord, it's funny you even have anyone apply for that.
And then to reapply.
The one thing is, it was very nice to see a few of the, like, Planning Commission and the Public Utilities, to see more than
Yeah.
one person coming in and taking interest, and hopefully that happens when more people find out the Park Board position is open. And we can, because I think different viewpoints and aspects help keep the city pointed in the right direction, rather than the same people doing it all the time, where eventually having vacant spots, so... With that, do I have a motion to approve the appointments as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7C, approved resolution 2015-89, establishing 2016 administrative fee schedule.
Every year, we have to reestablish the fees, and it's actually three separate actions. One is fees, one is fines, that have to be by resolution, and the third is by ordinance, which is permits. So you'll have three separate actions, but they're basically accomplishing the same thing. The first resolution, 2015-89, is administrative user fees. This includes things such as rental of city hall, rental of airport hangars, equipment charges, campground, animal control, that type of thing. And you will see in your packet, the ones that are highlighted in yellow, those are new or changed fees. On the equipment charges for the street department, we did not have the Kubota mower with blower on our fee schedule. Now, we don't rent these out, but we do have to have an established fee if we ever have something like a FEMA claim, like we had before. We had to have established rates, otherwise we had to use their rates, which were always lower. And so that is why we have fees for the public works equipment. Uh, the second thing that we had was the street openings, and that's when someone has to cut into the street, hook up water, sewer service. We'd receive a $1,500 deposit to make sure the street got put back, and we're finding that that's a not, not enough money to cover that. So we're making a recommendation that deposit become $2,000. The second item is, we do have excavators that work in the community often, and they're requesting, rather than each time coming to put in that $2,000 check, and then we give it back when they're done, and keep doing this, that they would be willing just to post a $5,000 bond for the year, and then we can draw on that if we need to. We did that this year, it worked very well. It just, we need to get it established into our fee schedule.
So that'll be an option, either or?
That's an option, either or. If you're a contractor that does a lot of work in the city, it's kind of a rigmarole to have to come in and keep doing these street openings, it's much easier for them to do a bond. And it's easier on our end, too. Uh, the next item is the Park Board is recommending on the recreational facilities, that on the ball fields, to rent the field, like a seasonal ball field, it's like a $100 fee. If you have a, a team that's gonna be using it, it's $100 for the year, and you reserve the field for those days. The next item would be the ice arena. They had a recommendation to increase the fee for the use of the ice arena to, from $400 to $500 for a day, and then $300 for an additional day. And then also to have a deposit for the use of the arena, that you could get back if you had it all cleaned up after you left. If not, it could be a $30 staffing charge if we, if they needed to have a staff person there, or if we needed to, um, be up there cleaning and doing things that they didn't do. So these are a little bit different changes, but these are recommendations of the Park Board. Uh, another recommendation would be the figure skating club. There's eight weeks of figure skating lessons, it's been $60 a person since 2004, they're recommending to go to $70. And they're removing the concession stand fee, we haven't been using that, because the Hockey Association takes care of the concession stand. Uh, the Senior Center is recommending an increase from $50 to $60 for use of the Senior Center, when it, when it includes the kitchen. And then the ambulance is, is recommending an increase from 7:15 to 7:50 for a basic ambulance run. And then it goes from 1:75 to 2:50 if you have a second patient that's either sitting or on the bench. And then also, they have some increases on the ambulance transfers, also from 7:15 to 7:50. And then the advanced life support, where we have a nurse along, where we have to pay a nurse to come, goes from $1,050 to $1,100. Uh, the CPR fees for when they're doing classes goes from $15 to $20. So it sounds like quite a few that I've covered. Um, everybody looked through them quite thoroughly this year, some years we don't make any changes, and some years we have several. You do have in there the date of last change, some of these haven't been changed since 2004, so you can, so we'd asked everybody to pay some careful attention to it. So those are the recommendations of the various boards and, boards and commissions and department heads. And those would be adopted by resolution, which is 2015-89.
That first, that CPR fee, that's per person, I would assume?
Correct. They go out and they train people to...
How long does that take for the training, for, uh, for the initial or the refresher course?
Usually, it's, it takes them a couple hours when they go in there. I mean, I know they do, like, they'll do, they'll go into the school. I mean, they even train up at the hospital. They train at the hospital. And also, they'll have other parties that'll want them to come in as a group and train, and so they just charge $15 per person. And if they get several people at one time, then it can cover their costs to take a trainer in and
That will
the annies and everything.
Cover their costs?
Yes, that's what they're trying to do here, is cover their costs.
Okay, okay. Seems a little low to me.
We still want people to take the class, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But some people are required to have that as well, and I'm just looking at licensures. My steam engineering license is, you know, that's a requirement for my job, this is a requirement for a lot of other jobs.
It is a requirement.
I don't want to see them lose money, that's all.
Well, it's, it's not only the people that are doing it for their work, it's also through the school. Pretty much all the students in the high school are CPR certified by our ambulance staff throughout their, you know, I think maybe their junior, or sophomore or junior years when they take that class. And so then they each pay that fee.
They will not run into the rent by charging this amount?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine with me, then.
Any other questions on the changes recommended by staff? Do I have a motion to approve resolution number 2015-89, adopting 2016 fee schedule for administrative user fees?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Keith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other discussion or comments? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved resolution 2015-90, establishing 2016 schedule of penalties?
Uh, this is essentially the same as the administrative fees, but these are penalties, these are violations of city code. Anything from like alcohol violations, zoning permit violations, animal violations. The ones that we have recommendations for change this year have to do with traffic violations, like the no parking, 2:00 AM to 7:00, bikes and skateboards, time limit, 48-hour parking, those types of parking violations that are violation of city code. And what we did was, some were 25 and some were 50, and we just made them all the same at 50. And so that is the recommendation to change, the 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM downtown, the bike and skateboard violation, time limits, 48-hour parking, other parking, and U-turns, all from, just to go to a flat $50 rate, to be the same as the other parking and traffic violations. And that would be the only, only recommendations to administrative penalties, that's resolution 2015-90.
Questions?
The only thing I have is, I know that our, um, let's see, Brian must, but the dog offenses, we seem to, that's been on the increase for some time. How do we sit on that? Do we recoup the money spent with the handling and the pursuing and the...
I, I don't think you ever recoup all your money for the animal handling offenses. I mean, you know, we do, like, the first violation is 30, the second is 60, the third one is 90, but even, even at that rate, you know, it depends on, if you have the police go pick them up, or the public works pick them up, and then, but if, if we get them back to the owner, the owner has to reimburse us. So that helps to cover for the ones that we never get reimbursed for. But when you net it out, I don't, I don't believe that we cover our costs.
Yeah, there, I see what you're, yeah.
That's one of them, that, one of the first years I was on the council, I had questioned if it was enough. And it got to the point where if you penalize them too much, pretty soon the dog's not worth it, and they leave it behind.
Yep.
So, you know...
Or they steal it.
Or they steal it out of town, yeah.
Or really nail an otherwise responsible pet owner as well. Yeah, I can see that, yep. I just hate to see lose money.
Do I have a motion to approve resolution number 2015-90, adopting a schedule of offenses and voluntary administrative penalties pursuant to statute 10.98 for 2016?
So...
Second.
Motion by Heidi, second by Dave. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved ordinance 763, establishing 2016 fee schedule for licenses, permits?
Uh, the licenses that we're looking at now are ones that have to be adopted by ordinance, and that's why they're under a separate schedule. There's a couple of them that are recommended. One is, if you recall, two meetings ago, we adopted a business registration ordinance, this is the fee part of it. So it's a $25 fee for business registration. Uh, the other item, the Planning Commission is recommending that variances go from, which were 150 or 100, go to 150 for residential or commercial, and then that, I guess they were 150, what they're looking at is, if they have multiple variances under the same application, the first one's 150, and the following ones are 75. That's what they're, if someone comes in and needs impervious coverage and street setback, they'd have 150 for the first one and 75 for the second. And the other one was to consider a lifetime animal license, and that was on there at $25.
That's a new one.
Yep.
That's new, I mean, that's something you can, you can discuss, and if you decide you don't like the idea, the one thing about having it annually is, we try to keep up on the rabies, to keep track of who has the rabies ones. But, um, it seems like every year comes along really fast for people to be in here licensing their animals, so...
Well...
It's something we put on there for discussion, I don't know if the dollar amount is the right amount or not.
I was gonna say, you could still track that, I'm sure, somehow, but...
Well, if they still have their tags, they'll wear the same tag for years.
Yeah.
I think it's a fee that we can try.
I think it's a good idea.
Try it. Maybe we find out later on that $25 is too cheap.
Could be.
You know? So, I think for right now, getting it on the books is, at least we're trying something different.
Yeah, good idea.
Absolutely.
As a dog, as a dog owner myself, I know the rabies thing, if ever we bring it to somebody for grooming or for boarding, that's a requirement as well, so...
That's true, for boarding, yep.
Automatic way to keep up with it, but...
I think it'd be a nice for a responsible pet owner, you know, because boy, a year does fly around.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve ordinance number 763, establishing fees for city licenses, permits, and services?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane?
I'll second that.
Second by Keith. Any other discussion or questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved ordinance 764, authorizing summary publication of ordinance 763.
And what this is, is because that previous ordinance included that whole chart of all those licenses and permits, I'm requesting to adopt only a summary, which is ordinance 764, which authorizes me to publish that summary. And, uh, this is something we commonly do, is that rather than, and to save publication costs, rather than publishing the whole thing, so... I'm requesting approved ordinance 764, authorizing the summary publication of the prior ordinance 763.
Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 764, authorizing summarizing summary publication of ordinance 763?
So... Second.
Motion by Keith, second by Dave. Any other discussion or questions?
Say it again, I'm kidding.
Lucky I got to do it the first time. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved resolution 2015-91, approving amendments to power sale agreement and associated transmission agreement.
Uh, this, this resolution is, it follows the presentation that you received on the special meeting on Monday night, and this has to do with the Missouri River and the electric franchise, or the electric utility, and how that whole company is being reorganized, and how we get power from there to here. And if anybody has any specific questions, I know Dave is on the public utility, he might be able to help answer those. Otherwise, you did have the opportunity at the meeting the other night to get a complete presentation on that. Uh, what we're asking tonight is to actually approve those amendments relating to the Missouri River Basin Power Agency, and this resolution that you have in your packet has been prepared by the city attorney according to the regulations that Missouri River presented to us. So if you have any questions, we can attempt to answer them for you. Otherwise, I request approving resolution 2015-91.
Questions? Discussion? Okay, Dave got any comments?
I think we, we all saw the show, so.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2015-91 Approving Amendments Relating to the Missouri Basin Municipal Power or Agency, DBA Missouri River Energy Services Power Sale Agreement, S1 and Associated Transmission Agreements?
I'll make the motion.
A motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other discussion or questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approve Resolution 2015-92 Authorizing Sale of Excess City Equipment.
The Public Works Department has identified excess equipment they no longer use, they no longer need it for their operations as they've been cleaning up the grounds down at the Public Works Garage. They've identified these three small trailers, an elevator and a water tank for sale through Min-Bed. They have received, been able to sell three, the three trailers and the elevator as they have shown on your resolution. The water tank has not been sold. And so we're requesting to approve Resolution 2015-92 Authorizing the Sale of That Excess Property and Equipment.
Questions? Comments? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2015-92 Authorizing Sale of Excess Property and Equipment?
Show move.
Motion by Dave, second.
Second.
Second by Heidi. Any other questions or discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7J, Approve EMT Pay Rate with Back Pay.
This was the item that was added to your agenda tonight. Ambulance Director, excuse me, Kathy Stuford has submitted a request to adjust the pay rate for EMT Scott Tullis from EMB Step 2 to Step 3 commensurate with his 10th anniversary date, which was actually April 13th, 2014, and to issue back pay for run and training hours. It was a $1.27 per hour difference and he had about 400 hours of training and run hours in that time period. So we are requesting to approve the rate adjustment for Scott Tullis to EMB Step 3, which is for 10 to 15 years of service with back pay to date of eligibility, which was April 13th of 2014.
Questions? I tell you, this is just an oversight?
Yes, it was.
Do I have a motion to approve rate adjustment for Scott Tullis to EMB- B Step 3, 10 to 15 years with back pay to date of eligibility, April 13th, 2014?
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Keith, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other questions or comments? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Now, I skipped over one, 7I. Approve Ordinance 765 Amending Electric Franchise Fee.
The Finance Committee did review various options for implementing a potential increase in the electric franchise fee, including a change in the mill rate calculation or a change to a percentage-based calculation. Currently, we collect it on number of kilowatts sold. And if we change it to a percentage of sales, it changes it, that would also include demand charges and base charges and that is not what the Finance Committee wanted to do. They recommend that we continue on a mill basis, so those charges are not affected. The current rate of 2 mils per kilowatt is equivalent to 2.5% when the kilowatt cost is 8 cents, which is approximately the residential cost. And then we calculated that a rate of 2.4 mils per kilowatt is equivalent to the 3% charge currently assessed to the gas utility. And then this would continue to exempt demand and base charges. The committee recommends that we amend the ordinance to change the franchise fee to the 2.4 mils per kilowatt, which is equivalent to a half a percent. And I did put an ordinance in your packet and also a chart showing the calculation, but I do have a recommendation to change the ordinance slightly so that we can, when we talked Monday night at the, at the joint meeting, talking about how that would work. And I included it, shall be calculated on a mil per kilowatt for retail sales at equivalent rate of 3%. And then that would be adjusted as the rate changed, so that we're always at a 3%. So I have some new language in there, but that's kind of my understanding after the meeting, what we wanted to do. So if the price per mils goes up, we'll change, or the price per kilowatt goes up, we'll change the mill rate, so we always collect at the 3%. That was my understanding is what we wanted to do. So I do have that ordinance if you want it. It's just one extra sentence in there that says we'll adjust it to satisfy the 3% requirement on an annual basis or whenever the rate is changed.
Comments?
Do we have the wording?
Pardon me?
Do we have the wording?
I do have the wording.
That specifies 3%.
Yeah, it does say in there, the franchise fee and then, okay, so I took it out right after the one you have in your packet where it says, where it has the City of SOC Center in parentheses and it says, "Shall be calculated on a mils per kilowatt hour rate for retail sales to customers at the equivalent rate of 3% of the residential rate. The mils per kilowatt hour to be adjusted to satisfy the 3% requirement on an annual basis. At the adoption of this ordinance, the franchise fee is 2.4 mils based upon 8 cents per kilowatt rate." So kind of trying to make that language, so we understand, in the future, people understand what we were trying to accomplish.
All right. The part in there about 2.4 applies only to this year, that's not part of the ordinance, I would assume that.
It just says at the adoption of the ordinance, it's 2.4 mil based upon that. I mean, I could take that line out.
I don't think it belongs in there because it's only for this year anyway. I mean, next year it'll be a different increase and it'll be a different.
Okay. Just leave it at the 3%.
That's fine.
Okay.
And then they do the adjustment.
Yep.
To whatever mill rate it takes. I think that's what the intent was, right?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve Ordinance 765 Amending the Franchise Fee for Electric Utility?
Show move.
A motion by Dave, second.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other questions or comments, concerns? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Unfinished Business, Updated Tax Rate Comparisons for Stearns County.
You have in your packet, now everybody has now submitted their tax rate final to Stearns County and so I did provide back just for your information, because we did amend our levy at the last council meeting to show where SOC Center falls within the tier of all the other municipalities in Stearns County and to show that our city tax rate went from 51.935% to 47.990%. So we did drop, you know, almost about 4% in our tax rate that's calculated against everybody's property value. Also, at the very bottom, you can see the county, city, school and other, each how they all compared. So as an overall, the tax rate went down, but as the city specifically went down as well. And just information for you, I usually give this to you every year, so you can kind of see where we're at in comparison to other, other cities in Stearns County.
Check out Belgrade. They went from 78% up to 87%. Big jump there.
Yes. Okay, any questions or comments on that? We have no new business. That then takes us into our consent agenda. You know, the schedule of claims totaling $105,998.27. We have November checks totaling $518,239.53. We have Resolution Number 2015-93 Accepting Contributions of $206 from the Men's Card Playing Group to be allocated to the Senior Center and $3,000 from Eggstar Financial to be allocated to the ambulance department. And I want to thank those two groups, organizations for their donations. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Show move.
Motion by Dave, second.
I'll second that.
Second by Keith. Any questions, comments, schedule of claims and the consent calendar? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational Items?
Just have a couple informational items for you. This coming, or next Thursday, I should say, December 24th, City Hall is closing at noon and will be closed on December 25th. And I also have in here, your packet, a 2,000 meeting calendar of where everybody's meeting dates fall. There'll be a couple changes due to elections and different conflicts, but this is kind of the way that ordinance is set up that the meetings should fall.
Okay, questions about the informational? Okay, with that, the city will reset this meeting and we will be moving into closed session. So I guess I'm basically asking everyone in attendance that they can leave. If you want to hang around. Okay, we've adjourned our closed session. We are reconvening our regular meeting. We've directed staff in what direction to go during that closed meeting. We're looking for a motion to adjourn the regular council meeting.
Show move.
A motion by Heidi, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.